Okay. Welcome to the North Area Committee meeting. I aim to start now and finish around seven thirty. That will hopefully give us time if anybody's got questions regarding the local plan or anything else that we're putting on tonight. Welcome, so welcome to the public. And my name's councillor Alan Hooper and I'm the Chair of the Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I will hand over to Philippa from the Democratic Services of the Council to read the housekeeping arrangements. Thank you, Philippa.
Evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is any emergency evacuation, please take instruction from council staff present. The assembly point would be through these doors, right round the building and in the all-weather, sorry, the all-weather football pitch is in front of the sports centre. The toilet facilities are situated through these doors, turn right into the dining hall, then there's a door on the left, if you go down there, there's a disabled toilet that we can use, but if in doubt, just ask anybody. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Philippa. Can we ask the members and officers around the table to introduce themselves, please? Start you with Lewis.
Good evening, councillor Lewis Chin Chen, Socksbury, Japperton Ward.
Good evening, Richard Williams, councillor for Stanington Ward.
Good evening, Mike Leavely, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
And councillor Penny Baker, good evening, councillor for Stanington Ward.
Hi there, Dablet Community Services Manager for the North, supporting your councillors.
Philippa Padet, Democratic Services.
Good evening, councillor Vicky Priest, Lowes, Stanington Ward.
Good evening, councillor Alan Woodcock, East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good evening, councillor Anne Wishaker, West Ecclesfield Ward.
Vic Valden, East Ecclesfield Ward.
And I'm Craig Campbell here, East Ecclesfield Ward.
I'll just give a brief summary about the meeting and where we're going. First, we'll deal with the formal part of the business, apologies, declaration of interest and minutes of the last meeting. Then we'll move on to the recent gas incident and the water incident in Stanington. We'll then have public questions and petitions, an update on the referral policy committee to be given, we'll then have an update from the Bradfield Parish Council from Vicky. We'll then move on to the North Area Committee proposed spending and Dave, the area manager, first to give a presentation and a discussion. Members of the committee were asked to give recommendations of the report. And finally, we will have an update on the draft Sheffield local plan. So Philippa, if you could just give the apologies, please.
Yeah, we have apologies from councillor Julie Growcutt and councillor Janet Riddler.
Thank you. Move on to agenda number three, which is exclusion of the press and public. I don't believe of anything that requires the exclusion of the press and public. So then move on to item four, which is the members' declaration of interest on items of the agenda tonight. Have we any declarations of interest from members? No, thank you very much. Go on quickly to item number five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. They're in the agenda pack and it was the meeting of the fifth of October twenty twenty-two. Could I ask members to approve as a crew record the minutes of that meeting, please? You show our hands? Yep. Thank you very much. Item six is the Stanington gas incident. Now hand over to Tim Mayett of Yorkshire Water Authority. Thank you, Tim. You want to just come and use this mic at the end here? Thank you. I'm grateful that we have in attendance the Yorkshire Water tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I see that. Hello, everyone, and thank you, Chair, for inviting us to attend this meeting. My name is Tim Mayett and I'm the Head of Corporate Affairs at Yorkshire Water. And with me tonight, we have Nathan Sunderland, manager of asset planning and network engineering, and Vicky Scroggins, who is our customer liaison advisor and has been leading on communication regarding our work on Bankfield Lane. And if there are any questions tonight, then I might call on my colleagues to help me answer those questions. So firstly, on behalf of Yorkshire Water, I would like to apologize to all those who suffered inconvenience or distress due to the incident in December. The impact on residents, particularly those who lost heating during a very cold weather period, was significant and we deeply regret that our network was involved in the incident. As a company proud of our Yorkshire identity, with the vast majority of our staff living and working in Yorkshire, I can assure you that our team members understood the importance of resolving the issues in Stanington and Hillsborough swiftly and attempting to quickly return some semblance of normality to the area and the residents living there. I will go on to cover our ongoing investigation into why this incident happened and how we're trying to make sure something similar doesn't happen again. However, firstly, I'd just like to touch on the incident itself in December and the role our team played at the point in supporting residents and partners. So as many of you will be aware, on the evening of the second of December, treated water began to escape from our ten-inch main on Bankfield Lane and the significant water, which is a significant water supply main. Within four hours, this had been repaired and there were no issues remaining with the Yorkshire Water network itself. As the present scale and impact of the gas, of water in the gas network became clear, we stepped up our support for Cadence. We offered support from our team, our contract service partners and our supply chain. Throughout the incident, our bronze and silver level incident management teams were coordinating support to Cadence with incident managers on location each day until the seventeenth of December. Our support onsite during this period, including dig teams assisting Cadence to access their network, tankers assisting Cadence to transport water from their network, gas safe engineers restoring gas networks in the area, members of our customer experience team liaising with Cadence and the council, and ten staff members who were conducting welfare checks throughout the area until the seventeenth of December. By running our incident management teams daily, we were able to step up support as required and were able to request, respond to requests for further assistance from Cadence and other partners, including the council, with which we were coordinating through the tactical coordination group and the strategic coordination group. Throughout the period, we used a variety of communication methods to try and keep residents up to date with what was happening and how they could access support. This included targeted text messages, our websites, door-to-door visits, letter drops, press releases and media appearances. We coordinated this activity with partners, such as the joint onsite press release on the eighth, press conference on the eighth of December, which was attended by our Director of Water. And throughout the entire period, we were really grateful for the support from Cadence and from the council in ensuring that residents received support and received communication about what was happening. As the entire agency response to the incident began to have effect, we quickly moved on to put a Yorkshire Water payment scheme in place for residents to help offset additional costs and expenses residents may have incurred. To clarify, this is separate to payments that Cadence themselves have made from the loss of gas supply. And prior to Christmas, the majority of homes who had lost gas supply had received an automatic sixty-pound payment from Yorkshire Water. It took a little longer for some properties where we lacked certain details, such as the payee or the account details, but this is now largely complete. We also opened a bespoke scheme where residents could claim for payments above that sixty pounds if they've incurred additional costs, such as water damage or increased electricity costs. This has been a particularly popular scheme with hundreds of claims received and resolved, although these do take a little longer to process due to the individual nature of each claim. If any residents here or any councillors know of any residents where they haven't yet received a payment but have applied for one, then please let us know tonight and we will happily pick that up. We do understand that residents want to know why the damage to our system happens and how it entered the gas network, but this is still the subject of the investigation and our insurers appointed an independent forensic expert for going to conduct that investigation. Until that is complete, we aren't able to confirm the cause of water entering the network, the gas network. On the ninth of January, our team began work to replace and relocate the section of main which was damaged in December. This work will continue until approximately the tenth of February and will unfortunately include traffic management. Vicky has been working to inform residents of the works, including door-to-door letter drops. Relocating our water main away from the gas main is in accordance with best practice and should reduce the chance of similar incident occurring. Taking a wider view of network resilience in Stanington, our team are reviewing performance and how we can reduce the chance of further incidents. This includes modifying the pumps to reduce the chance of shocks to the network, which we know is transient within the industry, and also installing variable speed drives at the pumping station, which will reduce the chance of these shocks. We are also looking at reducing pressure in areas of the Stanington network and in the longer term, conducting mains renewal on assets with the greater risks of bursts. This should all reduce the risks of further incidents in the area. We know that whatever the outcome of the incident into the cause of the burst, there are lessons for us to learn as a company. We have participated in a multi-agency incident debriefs and we are also conducting a thorough internal process as well. As mentioned previously, we deeply regret this incident and we are keen to increase resilience in the area. And as I mentioned earlier, if any resident or councillor would like to raise something with us around conversation, then please do raise that with us after this meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Very much, Tim. Just going to show a quick slide from Cadence and then we'll look at any questions regarding the gasoline.
Yeah, so this is just, we've already seen the Yorkshire Water information. We have information from Cadence as well. What we've done is summarize that in terms of a printed piece of paper, which is on the back table. And after tonight, we'll ask Jenny to put any copies of that into the library so that people are aware of that. That's just reproducing the information that we know is on the internet, but we're very conscious, not everybody is on the internet, so we wanted to make some paper copies of that available.
After the meeting, the Yorkshire people will still be here and will take any questions, if you've got any personal questions regarding your personal circumstances. Do you want to make any comments now at this point in the meeting? Thank you, Jenny.
Going down to the front. We understood that there was going to be some kind of an inquiry. Is that going to be done by an official body or is it internal, between water and papers and things, and are the authorities involved?
Yeah. So I'll come to Nathan after I've just said this to double check that what I'm about to say is correct, but we are, our insurers have appointed an independent body to investigate and Cadence insurers are also appointing an independent body to investigate.
Yeah, and just to add to that, we have had questions from our regulator on it as well, so not only we're speaking to you guys, but the regulator's been interested and will be interested in the outcome of the investigation that's taken place.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Yeah, certainly.
Hi, James Holley, local resident, Labour Party member. I'm just interested in who pays for this ultimately? You know, is it the service users who end up with higher bills as a result of the failure to renew public infrastructure? I mean, kind of, this has been a major incident for people in this area and yeah, they'll get compensation, yes, they'll get, you know, things fixed, but as a society, as a community, we kind of want answers, don't we? Because we actually want to know who pays ultimately through our bills, I'm assuming. Sorry. Just makes me a bit angry, really.
Thank you. You want to comment on that? Is it possible? It's a wide-ranging and a big question, that.
Yes.
In terms of full pay, you've kind of answered it in the fact that it's the residents of Yorkshire that pay their bills and we're funded by the bill payers. The objective of the company is to reduce the number of mains repairs that we have, but we're constrained by the amount of bills, the amount of bills that we can charge customers as well. So when we're funded in five-year price reviews and the regulator states the amount of bill increases that we can charge customers, and it's usually in line with inflation, so that caps the amount of capital investment we can do to renew the assets. Ideally, we would like to renew a lot more, but given the funding constraints set upon us, we have to accept a level of repair that needs to take place, unfortunately, i.e. you do get mains failures across the region. We have about seven thousand a year, but we have thirty-two thousand kilometres of mains, so when you put it into context, it's, we don't have that many mains failures in our asset base because it's so big, but we do appreciate certain incidents do happen that have a big impact upon local residents, like the one that occurred in December.
Pay. I just wonder if shareholders pay in terms of dividends?
I think that's a very broad question and in terms of how we plan our asset maintenance, it's done through five-year price reviews and that sets our expenditure for the next five years across all of our investments, across wastewater and water networks.
Is anyone else?
All right, good evening, Sean Ebenezer. I just wanted to find out how you worked out a compensation of sixty pounds per household when actually the main wreck of this whole incident was caused by Yorkshire Water for Cadence Gas, who was offered to pay a net worth of nine hundred pounds per household? And you really cost this whole incident, cut your payment at sixty pounds and want people to sweat out how they qualify for more than sixty pounds compensation for those many days during the festive season? I don't think it's fair.
So there's a couple of points there. One of them is about what caused the incident and we would say very much that that is still the subject of the investigation and that still hasn't yet been determined. The second thing is around the sixty-pound payment. It was made to all homes, which we were informed had had a loss of gas supply across that period and throughout, we don't know for what length because homes had different experiences in terms of the length of time that they didn't have gas. And so we made the sixty-pound payments so everyone would receive something. And the bespoke scheme, which is also possible and the details of which are on the paper at our desk at the back and have been on the screen, would allow residents to speak with somebody and explain exactly what the cost has been to them and then they can discuss, you know, that can go higher than the sixty pounds. And the Cadence payment itself was done because it was their network which is affected and therefore they had statutory duties to pay a certain amount.
I'd like to bring in now councillor Penny Baker, one of the councillors for Stanington, with comments and some addresses of thanks. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Chair. I would normally stand up for this, but the mic won't let me, so apologies for remaining seated. I really, when Alan suggested that it would have been an idea if somebody said thank you tonight, I was absolutely delighted to take up the opportunity because I think there's a lot of thank yous to say. I think when it hit us on the Friday night, not many of us knew it had even happened. It was the Saturday morning when people began to realize just how bad the situation was. And well, I'd say actually probably not the Saturday morning, but by the time we started moving around and trying to find what had happened, about ten o'clock on Saturday morning, Cadence was already on site and they were already at Lomas Hall. And I think that's one of the first thank yous to the Lomas Hall Group for allowing us to take over the village hall, which is, it was the centre of the village and became the centre of the village. Everything happened there. As the time went on over the weekend, we began to realize just how bad the situation was and Cadence brought in the Red Cross, British Red Cross, going round door-to-door in Stanington. I never thought I'd see anything like that, but they were lovely, they were helpful, they were supportive and they brought to light some of the issues that we weren't aware of. So they were really helping and I think a thank you should be said to them as well. I think our pubs, all three of them, Top House, Minis and the Peacock, were brilliant, even if they didn't have gas. They had hot drinks and they had warmth and they welcomed everybody in and as they went back on, they had hot food and cared for people. The village hall was sending round trays of bacon sandwich to the Cadence people and the people who were supporting Cadence and were with them because some of them were from Yorkshire Water, some of them were from British Gas, as you all know because you were all there. Well, you were not quite all there, some of us came back to it, which isn't very nice. And we, you know, we have all them to thank and they were thanked personally by the people of Stanington. They were polite, they were informative, they were efficient and they did a really good job. So I think it's really important that we thank them, not for just doing their job, but for doing it in a very supportive way. I think we want to thank the primary schools for reopening because it could have been quite easily for them to stay closed, but they didn't. We thank Christchurch in Stanington for opening its doors when it could. I mean, it was already supporting the schools for their Christmas pantomime plays and things that had to go on one side. I think going down my list, it gets immense, but on the Tuesday night, Sheffield City Council began to realize, and Cadence and everybody on the doorstep began to realize just how bad the situation was. We weren't talking about a few hundred houses, we weren't talking about a thousand houses. We ended up by talking about over three thousand properties. It was amazing. And then we got invaded by the media and everybody else, so. But they were, everybody was there and this is my big thank you. The people who were affected were supporting their neighbours. They were supporting the lady at the end of the street who they knew was in on her own. They were contacting us and telling us there were problems. There was somebody, Facebook just came alive. I mean, what did we ever do without Facebook? Facebook came alive, somebody said, they haven't knocked on my door yet, I haven't got a heater. Where are you? I'll get it for you. And somebody trapped up to Lomas Hall, picked up a hot plate or a heater and went down there and gave them and supported each other. The community supported each other and they supported Cadence. I mean, I will never forget going down the street on the Acon Estate and this lady coming out with a tray full of drinks and chocolate biscuits and fussing about the workmen who were not in her home, but her two neighbours' homes, who she'd got the keys for because they'd got young children and then got off to family. Now, you know, that was an amazing thing to do. This lady wasn't the only one. It was a long, drawn-out situation in freezing cold circumstances. And I suppose if the ladies here picked me up off the high metal, I could stay on the floor, I'm really grateful to her as well because I couldn't get up on my own, it was like a stage engine. Everybody worked together, supported the people that were helping them and as people got back on, that extended again. So if somebody got back on gas, then they cooked a meal for their next door neighbour. The hot food trucks came out and in really cold nights, people were queuing up and taking food for their next door neighbour. Everybody was helping and supporting each other. I think there's also thank yous that should go out to the headmaster here, Mr Bariclove, who opened this school so that people could come here on the Saturday and the Sunday and have showers and use the area and outside here to have hot food and drink because they couldn't get it in their own homes. It was an awful time, but I don't think we'll ever forget it. We don't think we'll ever forget it because of the community atmosphere, the help and support you gave each other and I think that is the last and most important thank you. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Penny. I don't know if we missed anyone, but I would like to thank Sheffield City Council for putting in and coming in and doing what they needed to do. I'd also like to thank the local team with Dave and his members for the work. They were based here for a fortnight, helping as much as they could. And I'd also like to thank the Sheffield City Council for the pre-Christmas party which was put on. Very warmly received, lots of young children and families coming and celebrating pre-Christmas after the horrendous sort of fortnight that they've been through. It was very well received and we received back a very warm thanks from them, so that was something else. I do hope we've covered everyone in there, but there's evidently still much work to be done to get things certainly back to where they were prior to this incident. Thanks, Tim, for your presentation and yeah, thanks for the, afterwards they will be here if anybody wants to speak to them about personal problems or issues. Jenny?
Could I just say this? It wasn't just an awful incident, it was also a very exciting. And the Stanington Library is asking people...
Thank you. Stanington Library is asking people to, if you can just spare a bit of time, to pull together your memories of what happened to you and any pictures that you've got or documentary evidence and drop them off at the library or email them to the library. We're going to compile an archive because you can get bet some poor child in the Forge Valley School is going to have to do a project on it in ten years' time. Let's get some information stored away and archive it because it's really good local history. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. I think that's something perhaps the local council may wish to take up and certainly I think through the North, like, we'd like to be involved with that as well, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. I think also we should thank the Stanington Community Centre who opened their doors to allow people to get the free meals that were being offered. I went down there a few times and certainly it was a nice, warm place to sit, especially when the cold snap happened, so thanks to them.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that a lot of people have said to me that they really appreciated the boots-on-the-ground approach that Olivia Blake, the local MP took and she kind of brought her team out. And I know at one point, I know there was a huge amount of people from the community who were supporting one another, the response was fantastic. I know that from the Labour Party, we put the call out across the whole of the city and I know on one occasion, we had a tally that there were sixty people, Labour Party members, that had come from all across the city into Stanington and I think it's always a helpful thing if people from across the city come and actually have a look at Stanington because they don't always do that. So I would like to extend my thanks to them and while I'm on the mic, I would just say, I think people will make their own judgment about whether the compensation from Yorkshire Water is proportionate to the suffering that people went through. I'm just looking to see whether I'm going to get into trouble. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, the chief executive of that company is very well rewarded, much more than sixty quid is going there. The shareholders are very well rewarded and I think we have to make a decision as a community and as a society about whether we think that an essential fact of life as water supply should be something which takes money and generates private profit rather than being invested into a reliable utility for everybody where we don't have these failures of the infrastructure. People will make their own views.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say that Sheffield is known for the communities it's got and I think this is... this is an excellent example of the community coming together, working together and doing things for everyone. Thank you. If we can move on now to public questions and petitions, I have three. Is there any petitions firstly from anyone? I'll, I'll, I'll take the questions now. Jenny, if you'd like to come to the front, please.
Jenny Van Tintren, co-chair of Spark, which is Stannington Pavilion Renewal Committee. We're a consortium of local groups which was set up in March twenty-two to save Stannington Park Pavilion and with a view to raising funds to replace it with a new purpose-built Stannington Brass Band rehearsal room and community space. We submitted an expression of interest to the council on the fourteenth of June twenty twenty-two. I have a copy if anybody wants to see it. And we received an acknowledgement and a couple of emails saying that no response could be provided due to capacity issues and many other higher priority projects across the city. It's now four months later and we still have no proper reply, nor any indication of when someone might be willing to even start talking to us. This is unacceptable, especially as our expression of interest was specifically directed at relieving the council of a burden of costs through a transfer of the building to the community. So my question is, would the council please agree to meet us soon to discuss the expression of interest and agree a way forward? What proposals does the council have for consulting with the community about the future of the pavilion? What do they, proposals do they have to meet the need for more community space? And what are the timescales for the review of community buildings that was authorised at the meeting of the Finance Subcommittee on the seventh of November, Agenda Item Six? And how does the council propose to involve local communities and consult publicly on that review? And I have another question from Action for Stannington, which I'm also chair, bad luck, you've got the wrong person here. Action for Stannington has offered repeatedly to partner with the council and raise money for a repair project to safeguard the pavilion in the short term because it's looking in a very sorry state. The last time we did this was in twenty twelve and it's now needed again. Who is currently responsible, please, for agreeing such projects and when will they talk to Action for Stannington? You might not want to answer those questions now, but I can leave them with Philippa and you can tell me later, but if anybody can give me any hope now, that would be wonderful.
We, we, we may need to take some, some of that away, but we will give you some response now. Richard, first of all, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know whether it's coincidence or just good fortune, but I actually had a meeting this afternoon with Ashman Ali, who is second only to Kate Josephs in terms of responsibility for this area. I share your frustration, Jenny, with the lack of movement. I've been trying very hard, almost on a, a weekly basis, to get something going for you. I don't want to preempt or over promise, but as I came here tonight, I checked my emails and it was actually Ashman Ali saying, please, could you give me your, the contact details of people I should be speaking to? I shall do that, in all honesty, probably tomorrow morning. It may, no, I'm not going to say it may lead to nothing because it won't, because I know the guy very well and he is a very determined character. The least you will get is a grown-up conversation. I hope you will get a lot more than that.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to come in? Penny?
Just to say, Chair, that we're really grateful for local people who showed an interest in this. We were very disappointed when the group put in a bid to try and buy Yoltop and it failed. It was very disappointing and really pleased that you are helping, working towards maintaining a pavilion in the park. It's really good news. Thank you.
Yeah, there is an ongoing report and work on, on the buildings in Sheffield, the buildings in housing, the buildings in parks. So that's ongoing. Hopefully we will get some results of, of where we're going and where we are with repairs and the, the state of some of these buildings. And no doubt the one that's hit the news over the last autumn is the Rose Gardens in Grace Park. So, but there are a number of parks where there's not been much or any maintenance on the pavilions and or buildings there. So, yeah, it's urgent, we, we need to look at these if they are savable, if they're in a fit state or, or we need to do to dispose of them. It's, it's, that's, that's serious. But thank you, Jenny, for both questions. Thank you very much. Richard?
Just really regarding your other questions, if you could send them to me and also to Ashman Ali, that would be very useful. Thank you.
Yeah, they'll, they'll need to come to the, the North Lac so we can formally minute them and respond to them and have a written answer to you, Jenny. Thank you. Two questions, I don't know whether the, the people are here. It's Pete Horrell. I'll read it out briefly. It's a question we received yesterday, is a Stannington resident and he's asking about the local planning officers working with the mobile phone companies to establish a location in Stannington for a mast. He's looking at the very poor broadband and unlimited access. So he's looking at where we can site hopefully a, a mast. There've been three, apparently three mast planning applications has been rejected. We will provide him with a written answer to that. If you come in, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a very difficult one because on the one hand, you want to protect the environment, but we all like our mobile phones. My suspicion is the mobile phone companies try and pick locations which suits their own objectives rather than reducing the impact on the local area. We had one which was outside, right at Stannington Village, it was one of their monster sites and you basically couldn't have put it in a more open position in the whole of Stannington Village.
Right outside Manor House.
Yeah. And, yeah, without getting into the details of whether mobile phone masts are, have medical issues, et cetera, et cetera. I just think that they're citing them where it suits themselves rather than suiting the local community. And that's why it needs, again, a grown-up conversation between the planners, planning department, local people and these mobile phone companies and saying, look, let's get serious here. There must be places where we can hide these things away which doesn't affect their operational standards. And if it's going to cost you a little bit more, Mr Mobile Phone Company, well, you make lots of money anyway, so I'm sure you can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. The third question is from Jim Conybeare. It's Jim here. He's a Stannington resident. He's asked actually five questions, is relating to the local plan document. Some of it is how the format it is and how difficult it is and the length of it, et cetera, et cetera. And then he moves on to various parts of that and he closes with the congestion around the A sixty-one, Mayling Bridge, Home Lane, that area. And then he's asking about planning game money and could that be spent on transport issues and community infrastructure. So I'll hand this over to the local plan people tonight and there's something to, for them to answer, hopefully. They have not received it and here we go. Very, very short notice, we've just received this, I think, out of late yesterday or today. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah. Oh, sorry, Richard Holmes from the Planning Service at City Council. First question about, asked about breaking down the plan into areas. It does do that. Part one of the document has several sub-area policies and the north-west sub-area is, is one of those. So it does have specific policies for different parts of the city. It doesn't correspond to the local area committee boundaries and that's something we tried to do as far as we could, but particularly in the case of the north area, as I'm sure you're aware, it's such a wide-ranging area. We considered that certain parts of the north lack have different kind of strategic characteristics. So we made a decision to have different sub-areas for, say, Stockbridge Deep Car, Chapel Town, Ecclesfield for the north-west where we are now. So that was a, a decision we made. He asks about the key proposals for Stannington. Basically, there's very little change proposed in this area and that's because the, the green belt boundary is quite tightly drawn. We're not proposing to, to alter the green belt boundary. So for, for Stannington, this area, not a lot of change proposed as part of the plan. This question about the traffic flows that were mentioned, that's probably something that I would have to ask my transport colleagues about. There is a supporting report, a transport strategy which feeds into the, the local plan. But yeah, that's something I probably need to ask colleagues in transport about. The planning game money, the community infrastructure levy is, is collected citywide and decisions on spending the strategic part are made separately to planning decisions. So that's something that the Strategy Resources Committee of the council would make decisions on. Fifteen percent of that community infrastructure levy does go locally to individual wards and to parishes and that can be used to deal with kind of local issues which could be congestion in a local area. And then there was a question about developments in Stannington Park. That's probably a development management issue, although there is a policy in the draft plan for green spaces which generally seeks to make sure that we, we kind of don't build on green spaces. So, but there, there could be exceptions to that rule. So I think that's covered everything. Thanks.
Now move on then to the update on referrals to policy committees. At our meeting in July twenty twenty-two, we was asked a question about buses in Grennyside, looking at the one-three-five and the M ninety-two and the difficulty of actually getting from Grennyside into Hillsborough to connect with the rest of the transport system. Since that was asked the question, we've actually lost in total the one-three-five from High Green through to Grennyside, through to, through to town. The issue was, the question was resolved and the resolution was to look at the, sending it to the South Yorkshire Mayor and the Transport Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. In the end, both of them really have finished up with the South Yorkshire Mayor and the, the answer is quite, quite long, but it's, it's referring to the bus companies, how they operate and they can operate virtually how they want. So, so we are where we are, I think. And we're looking now to April and seeing which, what's going to happen. Along with this, in, in the north, we have now, without the one-three-five service from High Green, no direct link from High Green as well to, to Hillsborough and the super tram, et cetera. So they've only now one bus that goes, number one A one, that goes down the north-east corridor into Sheffield. Anybody wanting to get there would need to catch two buses. So from High Green to Chapel Town and then catch the eighty-six service, which often is unreliable into Hillsborough and the A sixty-one corridor. David, do you want to come in with the, the other? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to make members of the public aware, as well as that response being on the internet, we also do have copies in the report pack if you, if you'd like one tonight, as with all the papers. Whilst we're talking about referrals on to other committees, I think people will be aware that we've moved to a committee system within the council. There are two highways matters that we just want to formally raise for, for, for the minute of two areas that have been discussed with your councillors at their briefings, which are matters that we would like the Transport Committee to look at because they're questions of wider policy. So one is around rural speed limits. So your Stannington councillors have been approached about the speed on Rails Road and Bingley Lane with a request to look at measures and look at speed limits. And the view is that there are many areas of Stannington Ward where there are challenges and issues and so therefore the committee is asking for the Transport Committee to take a wider view on its policy on rural speeds. The other matter, which has again come to your councillors, is around a request in Chapel Town and Smith Street for a residence parking scheme. And the initial response was that the current council policy is not to put in residence parking schemes outside of the city centre. So the Lac will be asking the Transport Committee to review that policy and to consider what such a scheme would actually involve and, and to report that back. So we'll make better those policy referrals up to the Transport Committee, Chair.
Yeah, I need agreement from, from, just to add that the, the Smith Street is a request from the, the residents themselves at Smith Street to have this parking scheme. It's a road that's perhaps a dead end, it's perhaps two hundred metres long with no real off-street parking, so they park there. It's in the centre of Chapel Town and Chapel Town itself is virtually devoid of any, any parking. And there are applications, there's one application where there's thirty-five apartments or dwellings with no parking whatsoever. So it's just adding on the parking situation all the time. People used to park in as the car park when there was no restrictions, but now it's down to a limited two, three hours. And it is a, the train station, both through Sheffield and Barnsley and beyond. And of course, people want to park their cars, park and ride, but it's not possible in Chapel Town. So if you could seek agreement on those two, let them go before go. Craig?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's a really important principle of, of how we run democracy across the local authority. I, I believe I'm the only elected member who's part of the North Lac here, who also happens to sit on the Transport Policy Committee. We're, we're meeting tomorrow and I'm going to try and see if I can raise it as a question under any other business. I, I think there is a more circuitous route to be able to kind of, for local councillors in our part of the city to say, we think that the citywide policy needs to be changed so that we can get through the things that our local residents need. And the fact that it's quite difficult to do that at the moment shows some flaws with our system and where we need to kind of keep reforming. So I will, I will try and ask that tomorrow as a member of that policy committee and we'll see how far it gets, should we hold our breath, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. If we just show agreement for both those then, unless anybody has any comments? No? Yeah, agreed? Okay. Thank you very much. Move on now to the number nine, which is the Bradfield Parish Council and councillor Vicky Priest is just going to give us a, a brief update.
Thank you, Chair. Just very briefly, just to say that Bradfield Parish Council supports groups and organisations within the parish. We've provided funding for a new football pitch on Wozzy Park Village along with other money from the like. We continue to supply parks with new equipment and as already has been said, that parish has got some SIL funding and we're continually looking for organisations and projects that would benefit from the SIL money. So if anybody knows of any organisations that need anything, please don't hesitate getting in touch with Bradfield Parish Council. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Vicky. Tim, do you want to say anything regarding Ecclesfield Parish Council? Do you want to come to one of the mics, please? Yeah, yeah. Just introduce yourself, Tim, please.
Oh, right. I'm Tim Wittyker. I'm councillor for the High Green on Ecclesfield Parish Council. Just a few little things. We've had a Ukrainian coffee morning where we was close supplied and this is obviously for the Ukrainian refugees who have in the area. We're not having any crease on the precept. We've had tree planting for the Queen's Platinum Jubilee in Chapel Town Park. Right, our parish community room has reopened after it's shut and refurbished and it's eventually got the, the go-ahead on the thirtieth of January. So that's well welcomed. In over the last quarter, we've given over- In over the last quarter, we've given over ten thousand pounds away grants, Ecclesfield Priory Players, the Scout Sheffield Rainbows, Thorncliff Football Club and Friends of Grenadine Green as well, or a few other people who've had some money from us. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks for that. We now move on to item ten, which is the, yeah, budget. Thank you.
I'm just going to move down here so I can see the PowerPoint, otherwise I'm going to rip my neck. So this is just a little bit of an update on the LAC's hundred thousand pound budget. I'll ask my colleagues to move me on because it'll work much smoothly, much more smoothly if they do that. So we have this hundred thousand pound budget, which is for projects that are in line with the, with the community plan that was developed after consultation with people across the area. And we had previously at other meetings agreed forty six thousand pounds worth of expenditure. There is an additional sum there which was agreed under delegated powers, which is for projects under five thousand pounds, essentially so that we can get on with small projects rather than waiting for the next meeting. I did notice when I was preparing this PowerPoint, but in the agenda pack and the formal documents on the internet, I'd managed to add a typo. So the figure that's up there, one four seven seven two is down as one four four seven two in the, in the papers. That's just a typo on my part. So if we move to the next slide, these are things that have been agreed since the last meeting that we are reporting back to you and we're asking your councillors who are involved in these conversations on an ongoing basis, just to formally note this evening. So there was a fund provided for additional youth work, which when we looked at the bids received, the LAC topped up because of the number of bids that we received. There's been funding for St Paul's Food Bank to have a new container to improve their storage to be able to support that. That's St Paul's in Parson Cross, which is in East Ecclesfield Ward. A new High Green Lunch Club is in the process of being launched. Councillor Whittaker has been leading on that. And in terms of what you've heard about tonight with everything that happened during the gas incident, support was provided for the community centre, which opened at very short notice to be able to provide that support, pay their own bills, et cetera. And they stepped up at very short notice, so support's been provided for them. In terms of that, should say parks rather than Parker, that's another interesting typo. We've agreed some additional gates, benches and bins for some of the sites that we've been supporting through the year. We've also agreed two bollards on Priory Road in Ecclesfield, which has a longstanding parking problem, and that will basically allow safe access to a junction where people are sometimes blocking the junction with their parking. And we've increased the ops budget, which means we can do things like pay for rooms bookings such as this. So those are all items since our last meeting that have been agreed so that we can get on with kind of business as usual. The further recommendation for items above five thousand pounds is that we continue the programme that we've been doing really throughout the north, particularly alongside the town parish councils and some of the friends groups to look to upgrade our parks. And as part of that, we'd like to replace the swings at the Rookery in Deep Car and Cross Lane, Stockbridge, because in many areas, equipment has just come to the end of its serviceable life. So there's a recommendation to the committee to agree that expenditure, which would mean a total allocation so far just below seventy two thousand pounds. And we would expect to bring another report to the next meeting at the end of February with further expenditure on that budget.
Thank you very much, Dave. Thanks for that and thanks for the work you've done with the budget throughout the year. I think you've done a really good job to get us where we are. It's not been easy at times, has it? So has anybody any comments on it before we move on? We just need to agree and we can have a full review at the next meeting in February. Thank you. You seek agreement? Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much. Item eleven then, draft local plan from Richard.
Richard Holmes from the Strategic Planning Team in the Planning Service City Council. So I'm here with my colleagues Amy and Paul sat at the back there to talk to you about the draft Sheffield Plan. So I'll try and move it on myself. There we go. So I'll just quickly go through what is the draft Sheffield Plan, how does it affect North Sheffield, how can you comment and what will happen to your comments and when will the plan be finalised or adopted as we comment? So it's the statutory local plan for the city. All local planning authorities have to produce one. It sets out the wide vision and frameworks of future developments of the city. Once adopted, it will guide decisions on planning applications and planning decisions will be expected to be taken in accordance with the plan. As it goes through the various stages, which I'll explain later, it does gradually get more and more weight, but it won't be, it won't affect planning decisions fully until it's finally adopted. So it covers the whole of the city except for the Peak District, which has its own planning authority. It covers the period up to twenty thirty nine, but there is a requirement to look to review the plan every five years. And it will replace the current local plan, which consists of the core strategy, which was approved in two thousand and nine, and the unitary development plan, which goes all the way back to nineteen ninety eight. So the plan will identify or allocate land to develop for different uses, housing, employment, shopping, identify where land should be protected, such as in the green belt, sets out new requirements for design, for example, space standards in new homes. It'll set out ambitions for transport and travel, better public transport and active travel connections. And there's a whole raft of transport policies as part of the plan. And it'll look to secure developer contributions towards community benefits such as affordable housing. And that will be through the community infrastructure levy and also through section one oh six agreements. Now, those levels have been set to achieve the maximum benefit possible from development, but they're also limited by viability. So we can't set those rates too high, which will challenge viability of development. So the plan actually consists of various parts. The part one is the vision and the spatial strategy. And I mentioned earlier when I was answering those questions, it allocates different sub-areas of the city and has different policy approaches to those sub-areas. It also allocates sites for specific development. Part two is the development management policy. So they're sort of topic based policies which will be particularly relevant for determining planning applications. The site allocations are set out in a detailed document, annex A. There's also annex B, parking guidelines. There's a key diagram which kind of brings together all the kind of spatial approach of the city as a whole. And there's a policies map, which we've got examples of out at the back there. The easiest way to look at that is online because you can zoom in and out and you can switch different layers of information off and on depending on what you're interested in. But we have reproduced those as best we can as paper copies at the back there. And there's many supporting documents, at least fifty, I think that's on the website, which cover housing requirements, employment land requirements, viability, infrastructure provision, retail and leisure, biodiversity, many others. So those documents are all available online on the consultation webpage. We do have paper copies of all the background documents, if you'd rather look at those at Howden House, but we've only got one copy of all of those. So that's the only place you can go to view those. But the main documents are all available in First Point and in libraries. So coming particularly to the North LAC area, there's two sub-areas that fit wholly within the North LAC. So there's Stockbridge, Deep Car, Chapel Town and High Green. As I mentioned earlier, again, there's also parts of our northwest sub-area that fall within the North LAC as well. So just I'll try and speed through these. So Stockbridge, Deep Car, there's twelve allocated sites, some of those already have planning permission, nine hundred and twenty eight new homes. That doesn't include the Hollinbusk site that recently got granted planning permission, but that's out of about thirty five and a half thousand housings, housing requirements for all of the city. There's three strategic sites identified there, I'm not going through those, which are larger sites for housing development. There's also a relatively small area of employment land designated in Deep Car. But the key message here, that all development sites and allocations are within the urban area in Brownfield, on Brownfield sites. We're not proposing any changes to the green belt boundary. And there's also policies to support the district centre at Stockbridge and Foxpally and then various local centres that have been identified. And there's also some sustainable transport improvements proposed, including support for the reopening of the Don Valley rail line and a mass transit corridor from the city centre to the upper Don Valley. Coming to North, Chapel Town and High Green sub-area, not a lot of development proposed there, so only twenty five new homes, although there are some others identified that have planning permission. A reasonable amount of employment land, again, no change to the green belt boundary, again, support for the district centre, Chapel Town and local centres, and also protection for existing employment land at Thorncliff. Just mention again, I think I touched on this when I was responding to the questions earlier, in terms of Stanington and this, this part of the North LAC, because the green belt boundary is key and it's drawn very tightly and it also washes over certain areas, very little development is proposed in this area. So it covers Stanington, Locksley, Worrel, Utter Beach, Thorncliff side. And there are a couple of minor, relatively small housing allocations proposed at Utter Beach Lane, Platts Lane, Wigan Farm in Worrel. It's also the Utter Beach Mill Development, which is mainly in Barnsley, although part of that side does fall within Sheffield. Okay, so we're in a process of public consultation, started on the ninth of January, runs for six weeks, the twentieth of February. We're asking residents to tell us whether the plan is suitable to meet future development needs and whilst also protecting the environment, is properly justified in terms of the wording of the policies and the allocations, is it deliverable? So that's about not asking for too much in terms of policies, policies that can, that are realistic and can be delivered, and is it consistent with the government planning policies and the national planning policy framework? Now, after the public consultation, there will be representations made and the council may agree with some of those representations and we can propose our own modifications to the plan. So these will probably be relatively minor things that we may be missed out, where we've maybe got some policy wording slightly wrong. So part of that, the next stage of the consultation will be the council probably proposing some amendments to the plan. But this, this plan is basically, the council has approved this, it's been through full council, it got unanimous approval at full council. So the next stage of the process is that these, the plan with amendments will be submitted to the government. The government will appoint a planning inspector who will oversee a public examination. So just to kind of run through the various stages of the public consultations where we are now, I mentioned that the next stage will be the submission of the plan. So the government, that will be after we've processed the representations, the comments made and then submit to those. So that will be sometime in the summer, hopefully. After that, the government will appoint an independent planning inspector and then the public examination will be arranged, probably late summer, autumn, probably being realistic, that's kind of out of our hands, that's down to the government inspector when they're available. Once we've been through that examination, there will be modifications proposed to the plan by the inspector and they have to go out for public consultation as well. So that'll be summer, autumn twenty twenty four. And then all being well, we can finally formally adopt the plan. We're hoping that'll be December twenty twenty four. So it is quite a, it is quite a long winded process, it's quite a sort of formal process, it's bound up by regulations, but we're, we're going as quickly as we can. Okay, that's the whole from me. So thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Richard. Thanks to you and your team. It's been a torturous route to get to where we are, but I think we're getting there. Before I ask members first, I'll just ask if somebody out there wants to comment or ask a question?
Is there a question?
Yes, certainly. Do you hear a mic? Just to take them can all hear. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Holmes, I'm from the Friends of the Locksley Valley Community Group. We met last week and discussed preliminary views about the local plan. I just think most of the community groups will be broadly supportive. We very welcome the protection, very much welcome the protection of the green belt. The process is complicated and it's long. While we're supportive, it wouldn't surprise me if some would-be developers with their eyes on certain sites will be less supportive and may offer very different views to ours. And I wonder at what point in this process, if we find that other people have argued strongly against protecting certain sites, at what point can we then counter those arguments? Is that at the stage where you go to the planning inspector or is it at an earlier stage?
Yeah, it will be at the public examination. So the, the comments that are made will be processed by the council, we'll kind of try and group them into particular topics or particular areas. They'll then be submitted and the inspector will decide how the examination is run and how the, but yeah, you'll have an opportunity. If as part of your comments, your representations on this draft, one of the questions you'll be asked is, would you like to appear at the examination? So you can say, you know, you can say, yes, you can change your mind later if you don't think it's appropriate, but if you think it would be helpful to appear at that examination and be in the same room as the developers who are arguing a different point of view, then yeah, you can do that and the inspector will be happy for you to come along to those sessions.
Thanks, Richard. Mic, don't you come in? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, the developers will not be happy because they like to build on virgin green land because they make the most money there. That's the way it works. However, two years ago, we had an issues and options consultation in the public over six weeks about what we wanted and over eighty percent of them wanted no development in the green belt. We fully backed that and it was this council that agreed back in March that we would maintain the green belt boundaries where they were and we could still meet the housing criteria for building Brownfield land and within the urban area. So we've protected it, we've protected the green belt. And believe me, before that, there were developers all over the green belt surveying for housing. We stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Mic said part of it already about protecting the green belt. But the other thing I wanted to say is, Richard mentioned briefly the Peak District. And for those who don't know, the Peak District National Park has its own planning authority, even though quite a large percentage of it is within Sheffield. The boundary is where the dams are at this end and Lower Bradfield and Higher Bradfield are all in the Peak District and it goes right out of the city and into Manchester and beyond. So as it is a third of the landmass in Stanington Ward, it is worth pointing out that we don't have as a city council the authority over the peak planning area. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much then, Richard. Thank you. Thanks everybody for contributing. It's been a real good and interesting meeting. Our next meeting is at High Green on Thursday, the twentieth of Our next meeting is at High Green on Thursday, the 23rd of February at 6 o'clock. I hope we can have some more displays and presentations prior to that. Before you do go, we've still got the police, I think, yeah, at the back. We've got libraries and we've got Yorkshire Water and of course the local plan. Libraries are currently undergoing a consultation and it's for the main libraries, the city council libraries, not the volunteer-led libraries like Stanington. But they're looking to change some of the opening hours, trying to standardise them. And so there's a consultation going out to members of the public. So if you could have a look at that before you go, it's certainly interesting to get people's views of how libraries will be shaped. So the nearest sort of library we're talking about here is Hillsborough City. And there's, there's others. And the other one in the north is the Chapel Town Library. The Stockbridge, sorry, the Stockbridge, I'm not sure about the Stockbridge. Yep, Stockbridge as well. But the, the volunteer run at Ecclesfield and Stanington won't be affected, yeah. So thank you all for your attendance. Safe journey home. It's not snowing, I believe, so we're okay. Normally January is a horrendous time to have a meeting, but thank you very much. Hope you've enjoyed it and we'll be around afterwards, all the councillors, if anybody wants.